Thank you all for being here. Call this meeting to order. Councilman Maloney, do you see a call?
Yes, sir, I do.
Fantastic. City Council, this time you have an agenda before you. It has been pre-distributed. I believe there was one amendment at the very bottom. Number 10. Entertain a motion to adopt the agenda.
Make a motion to adopt the agenda as distributed?
Motion, do you have a second?
Second.
Any discussion, council? All in favor?
Aye.
Close, sir? Thank you, council. The presentation coming up. Ms. Burgess, if you will, this is for presentation-only, council. And those present, there will be no discussion questions asked. This is simply for Ms. Burgess to present to us the facts of this item, and then this will actually move on to the agenda for next Monday. So, Ms. Burgess, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, we have one article or one item on our agenda for planning permission on Tuesday, and this was to rezone from M1 to C2 out at 268 Hood Park. So, it's a 2.15 acre lot. It used to have the old WYYZAN radio station in that big white building that you saw in the front. It has 300 feet of frontage along Hood Road, and it, like I said, it has that building. It's about 1,500 square feet. And so, they are looking to maintain that building or retain that building and then build an event space behind it. So, the surrounding uses are pretty much what you would figure out there. Across the street is the old shoe factory. To the south or to the east is the cabinet company. And then, to the other side is the propane distribution. Of course, in a C2, which we all know it is, we want a C2 now. But, and then to the north, we have our utility shop. So, a variety of uses out there, mostly industrial uses. So, when we think about our future development plan or the comprehensive, of the comprehensive plan, so this is part of the North Jasper Corridor, that gray area there. And it is known to have that mix of hard commercial and light industry. So, the building that they would like to build is a 50 by 120 metal building. And it is to be used as an event space with the corresponding parking as well. So, that structure that's in the front was built in 1980. Again, they're going to make that into a separate parcel, and they'll be using that as an office. And so, it does meet the characteristics of this area out there. And, you know, like I said, the existing zoning out there is M1. And so, for that area, it's, you know, I was surprised that somebody would want to rezone anything because industrial is very hot right now, especially one that has that much space. So, again, the metal building, I have informed the applicant of our requirements for metal buildings about the accent and the facade cover and the fence station and that are part of our zoning regulation. So, they are aware that they are going to have to do some upgrades to the exterior because the metal buildings are no longer allowed. So, that's just a rough drawing of what they'd like to do. Obviously, they will be held to the standard of providing site plan review. So, we'll have water out there, stormwater, and all of the things that go along with our site plan review. So, I was thinking with, because of this location and having a C2 designation, there are some C2 designations that I don't think that would be good in that area. As you know, event space is generally used on weekends and evenings where there isn't much traffic and, you know, you won't have as many of those industrial traffic moving, you know, with, you know, some of the events. But, however, if by chance they decide they do not want to do this, and this is not a feasible thing, I think we should restrict anything that has to do with childcare because we do not want to have the interaction of industrial traffic with, say, school buses and drop-off pickup situations. Also, that area is not very good, not a very good location for a convenience store, gas station, gas station with a convenience store because of the condition of Hood Road. So, and of course, our third condition on that is, you know, the rezoning does not guarantee you access to water and sewer. Currently, there is a septic out there, and she did discuss with upgrading it or if she can't have it, and she's been talking to the Department of Health. She does have an engineer and a surveyor, and they, you know, she's been very open and honest about what she wants to do there and in contact with us. So, that would be it.
Fantastic. Thank you, ma'am. This item will be presented to council for polluting and input questions on the next agenda. Under new business, item number one. Discussion in consideration of Pioneer Road improvements bid package award. Ms. Mary Burgess.
So, we, we have bid package. Let me just grab that. So, as you know, Pioneer Road project is right out there at 823 Pioneer Road. There's been a flooding issue out there for years at that residence. And earlier in the year or last year, Josh and I went out and did some investigation because a private employee had told him that all he needed was an upgraded pipe. So, we went out there and we found several things that needed to be taken care of, and that pipe was not one of them. The stormwater that is causing all the erosion, causing all the flooding over there is due to a stormwater pipe underneath the road that is level. There has no pitch on it. So, what is happening? So, what is happening is the water is coming down the hill on either side of this gentleman's property. It's coming to where the stormwater drain is going over. So, it's going under and over his driveway at the same time. Comes to this holding spot where the stormwater pipe is. So, it has to get to a certain fill in order for the stormwater to actually get the floodplain on the other side. So, that being said, they eroded a lot. Josh over there was standing in it, and it was still over his head. So, if that gives you any indication of the erosion that has happened over the years. So, as part of that project, we reached out to GMC. We gave them a task order. And then, we went out for bid, and we came back with our bid package. And our lowest bidder was Johnson Paving. And with $224,000... Sorry.
I don't know.
Yeah. So, we are asking that we award the contract to the lowest bidder, Johnson Paving. I did have Mr. Sifin review the contract that GMC provided for Johnson Paving to sign, and he said it is acceptable. And we did discuss how much to, what type of bonds you have the paving company give us, and we're going for 100% cost of the project. So, it would be the $224,000 plus. We'll probably put a contingency on top as well, just in case everything falls through. Our ideal timeframe is after school gets out. So, we have limited traffic coming up that area because the road will need to be closed. So, once we award this and they get a notice to proceed, they have to complete the project within 120 days.
Thank you, ma'am. Action requested down at the bottom, council. This is a new process that we are going to try this evening. There are a couple of questions under action requested. Number one, will it be advanced to the regular council meeting? Number two, is it a consent agenda item? And third is, do you need additional information at that next meeting?
I apologize. I was looking.
You have the wrong words. Okay. Council?
To point of order, Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
So, as you said, this is a new process. So, what rules govern? Is it a majority or that would determine whether it goes to council versus consent agenda and so forth?
Good question. So, typically here for our work sessions that we're re-implementing, the idea is that all information and all items be presented to the full council in a work session setting to allow conversations and discussion. And through that, get an organic feel of if there's resistance or questions that council has that needs to be answered by staff. If that's an overwhelming feeling, then staff could probably assist us in saying this will or will not be placed on that agenda.
So, we can have discretion behind on the side?
Yes, absolutely. We may find that some of these are very simple, and you just want them on consent. Some of them need to go to the next council meeting. And some you may have a couple of questions that you want answered before the next meeting. Sure. On this one, it's very straightforward. I would probably push it to the next regular council meeting and consider it a consent agenda item. Has the vendor opened, and it's gone through the process.
What should come around, Ms. Burgess?
So, one here, we've been at splosh.
Splosh. Keep the whole?
Yeah.
No, only can't cover all of it.
Say that again.
Only can't cover all of it. You'd have to use, you're still going to be the portion of 2014 splosh.
2014.
Emmy mentioned not wanting to start it until after school is out. But it being 130 day?
120 day.
20 day? School will be back in before it gets finished then. Okay. Nothing we can do about it.
Yeah, it's standard.
So, council, will they close the whole road?
Yes, they have to also just write, you'll be able to get the houses at the, draw a blank, the horseshoe over there.
Right, sir.
Yeah. Yeah, and then write to...
Your toes are voids. Your toes are voids.
That's like third night meeting. That's the level of dream about these. And Frontier. So, it is right at where Frontier and Pioneer go. So, we have to replace that section of street because it is sloping. And then, we have to build up the wall, put up a guardrail and so, build up the slope. So, it will require at least half the road being closed. But if they, you know, if they push right through and put road plates down, you know, it shouldn't take an extreme amount of time.
That's the one where the clock is big, huh?
Look, the road, the road's starting to slough away on the sides. You can see it. This is very noticeable.
All right, council, I'm going to check, yes, for advancing to regular council. Is there any reason why this should not go on consent?
I'd like to council just to speak on that. I think that they need to know that to keep up the road, it's just going to cost a little bit of money.
Okay. All right, is there any additional information council may need? Discuss the funding and the timing? Anything else council may want staff to research? Council, all right. And move on to the next one. Item number two, discussion in consideration of ordinance revisions.
So, we have a couple revisions that Mr. Sifin and myself have been working on. I can go through them really briefly and give you the synopsis of why we're doing that. So, the first one is to have it so that... So, making sure that we have the site plan approved prior to issuing an LDP. So, this goes back to people who just want an LDP to clear their land and then say, look, it's developed, ready, and it just sits there. So, we want to make sure that we have people that are serious about development in here and want to move forward with the project. So, you don't get the LDP without a site plan. The second one is to require the Georgia Stormwater Management Manual as our minimums. Right now, there's a couple of different sections where the zoning official can request anything that they see fit in order to meet the ordinance, and that's what I've kind of been using. And when people reach out and say, you know, you have stormwater management on one of your items, what is, what are your standards? And I tell them that, but I want to make sure if it comes pushed down the shut, it is in our ordinance. So, and apparently, we will be one of the first hill cities or mountain cities to adopt it.
First mountain city.
Yeah. There's another portion of this as well, and this is trying to avoid the situation that we are in with pinnacle townhomes. It states that stormwater has to be on the site that is being developed. So, you can't just develop it. Your stormwater has to be on the same site as the development because we don't want to have, if we are going to accept a roadway and the stormwater is draining onto private property, that opens us up to litigation for point source pollution. Okay? The next one is regarding sidewalks. So, as you know, all new development, both residential and commercial, require installation of sidewalks on the public way. And so, this is for those areas where that it may not be able to safely be installed or that may have future development expansions that are coming down, such as the 53 widening and what, as well as, you know, different aspects of other development that other development is forcing a widening of the road. So, if it is not possible at that time, instead of just allowing that to go by, we are creating a sidewalk fund. So, basically, it is our sidewalk specifications, the GDOT, four-foot wide ramps, all of that. They spec it out, and then they give us the, we give them the number that it would cost to build that exact sidewalk to our spec. And then, they pay that with a 20% on top. So, my thought was for that to go into a fund to create engineer fix sidewalks around town. Also, this would be something that if you want this to do the payment in lieu, you obviously need to have some reason, say, you know, size, shape, topography, something in that that prevents you to do that safely. But also, they need to present a letter to council. Council needs to approve this waiting. So, it isn't anything that I'm going to sit there and wave sidewalks. That's, I may support it, I may not support, it depends. Or am I just telling you how the area is out there and, you know, and what other development? But, so, we do that, and then that would, the street department would oversee that fund. Any questions?
So, you want to discuss as we get to the next?
Absolutely.
So, I have a little bit of issue. I have some concerns about your empowering council to, in essence, grant a variance on something that doesn't make it criteria for variances, which I believe you are empowering to move along. So, that, I don't, maybe it's probably just misunderstanding on my part.
So, with this, if when we add this sentence or add this in there, they no longer need a variance, obviously, so... But I cannot waive sidewalks with an administrative variance, I cannot.
So, how can council do that?
With this new ordinance in place.
Okay.
Would you rather agree the staff cam with the ordinance revision?
I don't know. I haven't really given it much thought.
So, the variance, I'm sorry, the ordinance could read that the letter be submitted to staff at that level and could be appealed to us if necessary.
So, is this coming out of pill off your red issues? Is that part of it?
Uh huh. And also 53. The corner of 53 where they have a gas station.
All right.
And that's going to be destroyed two years later, so... But I have with the landscaping up there, I have made them disperse the landscaping that was going to be along that side on the rest of the property so they don't get a buy on the landscaping.
So, it's something to think about.
So, this is a temporary way, or you're allowing them to do this temporarily?
So, for some instances, so when, like for 53, they're coming in and they're putting on sidewalk. Where it is on Philadelphia, because of the changes with Haley Farm that's coming up and the winding that needs to go, it's still, they don't, it wouldn't make sense to do that, and they can't safely install it. So, you know, I'd rather have some sort of fund and then, instead of just giving them a, yeah, okay, I know you can't do it. So, no.
Do we have the status of our sidewalk strategy as far as the, it's not on the agenda?
Well, you know, that is part of the communal tap grant that was mentioned to the committee last night. That's a small portion of the overall sidewalk project.
Okay. Well, we got, we got a grant for design. Okay.
So, the next one is parking and access. So, it's for driveways and surfaces that access outdoor storage of goods and materials and are accessible to the public shall be paved, concrete, asphalt, or other finished material. Gravel and loose stone are prohibited. So, this, again, this is for those areas where, you know, for example, they have their office and a little parking lot, and then everybody walks around and does, you know, have, you have loading, you have drop-offs of materials, and it's just not conducive to stormwater. It's not conducive to a clean site. So, this is one of the things that Mr. Sifin wanted to work on to make sure we have that in there so we don't come into the situation that we are on Interstate Drive.
Thank you.
So, I'm looking at the camera. This doesn't have anything to do with our ordinance that requires paving of parking lots, is it?
No.
Okay.
That still is in place.
Even though it stems from that. This solidifies that ordinance.
Indeed. All right, so this is the first shot at a sign situation that has, right before we get into our festivals, our downtown lives, our art walks and everything like that. As we know, yard signs are prohibited in our ordinance. It doesn't matter who you are, except if you're campaigning. So, we know that the advertising for the majority of these things is through yard signs. So, this is to basically exempt the city, county, or affiliated department-sponsored event from having to comply with that. So, last year for, what's the first festival?
Marble Festival.
Marble, is that the first one? I think that's the last one, is it?
The Statement.
I'm just going to go on.
Yeah.
Chief Fest, September, October, Marble Festival.
Yeah, so...
Fourth of July.
Yeah, Downtown Live, all of those things.
All St. Andrew's, St. Tractor. That was spring.
The other signs as well.
Anyway.
This is so that the yard signs that are used to promote events that have to do with the city and the county, they do not have to go through the same, the prohibited part. Last year, we tried to do something in order to get everybody in compliance. We had them, you know, they got tags that said, these have to be, these are temporary. They have to be done by, you know, Tuesday. And they gave us a $250 retainer. So, if we had to go and pick any up, we cashed it. But that was kind of just a Band-Aid while we worked through this. So, and again, I don't know who you'd like to include in this, profit nonprofits, city, county, sponsored, you know, so...
So, this was taken to committee last night. I certainly recommend reading through it, thinking of the different groups that we have in our community that may be impacted or affected by this. As Mary said, last year, these individuals did pay the fees for our sign permits, and we were okay.
It's just...
Is there a timeline on it, or would you just say you put them up whenever?
So, it's usually the 30 days before when they start putting out all the signs. And the problem being is the type of sign. It's the yard sign. We don't allow them. So, if they all had a sign that was allowed, but we also don't have, the longest temporary we have is 21 days. So, this is just something to try and, I don't know, get us through that.
Yes, sir.
Um, I would follow in thinking about yard signs. I don't, council, but I guess it's a good thing. Based on some of my experience with the chamber and planning of the Marble Festival and the way they divide their booths, I think allowing, I think a structure might be worthwhile to consider would be to allow a lot for profits to do this. And if the profits are going to do it, it may be considered some sort of fee if we can legally do so. And then, on the back end of that, if they don't get their signs up in an appropriate amount of time, to consider maybe a fine for them not to do that. That's just the way that we kind of did it. In other words, if you're going to make money on this, then you ought to, you ought to give us a little share of that because it does detract from the appearance of our city.
Rather than fines, isn't it written, Emmy, in the, in the ordinance that they give a $250?
No, that's nowhere in our ordinance. That's just how the city's been doing it.
I'd rather do that than a fine or have a, have money upfront that would be refunded.
I think there's some issues with that potentially.
Not only with the campaigning signs.
There are issues with it on the campaign.
Correct. We can no longer charge the $250.
On the campaign.
Yep.
Council, we ever cashed any of those checks or anything? I don't know that we ever did.
I don't think so.
So... So, where's...
Has this been to the committee?
It's in committee last night. This is brand new. So, this item itself could be retracted and taken out from everything else and studied heavily by committee if that's what we'd like.
If the committee recommended, did they recommend? We're still involved, at least I, it's not an easy answer.
I think, I think there's some issue with pulling things out because of the cost of the advertising that's going to be required.
So, I, this is why, and I'm glad we were able to do this. I don't advertise till Monday. So, if you want me to pull something, I will pull it out, and then I don't have to do the advertising and spend the money again. So, this ad, the little ads that we do for, say, the rezonings, those cost $325. And this is about 10 of those little ones. So, I'd like to just not have to keep re-advertising. So, if there are items that you want to see pulled right next to them, let me know. And because I, that's what I really...
And I think this is part of the problem with the business owners that, you know, we're saying, okay, you can do it if you're having a festival, but you can't do it if you're a brick and mortar.
Right. So... So, if you're having a flash sale, why can't you put out a yard sign that says the bodega is having a flash sale versus the festival is this weekend?
Yeah.
So, yes, I see the conflict in that.
So, if we pull this out and you re-advertise, you just have to do that small portion?
I do, so, if I re-advertise, yes. If we decide that we want to move forward with some different language on that down the line, then yes. I just have to do that one. Or if there's any others here as well.
But some of these items, there is some urgency in getting them taken care of.
Yes, yes.
That is not wonderful.
The paint, the gravel and stuff, that was one of those, right?
Uh huh. So, the next one is to address or clarify a situation in our use table. So, it has to do with our liquor, beer package sales. So, we would be adding the word wine, liquor, beer, and wine package. And it would still not be allowed in the CBD and only allowed in the C2. And M1? No, I'm sorry. C2, just the C2. So, this is to clarify the situation with package stores and selling wine package. So, where we, where we were specific for liquor and beer, there was some consideration of a gray area for the wine. So, we're just adding wine in there.
So, I guess this is part of our licensing reevaluation or done on the...
Yes, yes. And I would like to know when we can start doing work on that because I met with a couple of people today.
So, council?
You ready?
This item is similar to the last in the fact that it's already in ordinance. In effect, this is clarifying and adding to the ordinance wine package sales. As mentioned to committee last night, you have other things in mind that we as a city would not like to see or need to restrict out of our central business district. Now is the time to have the conversation, the thought process, and that one may also need to be pulled depending on how we feel. Or if it's urgent, this one can be pushed through and we have to re-advertise again.
It doesn't change the wine specialty shop ability?
But I think if we're going to push this through, I think we ought to enforce what our, our ordinance says with the wine specialty shop and breweries and everything downtown.
I think we, I think we can close the book and all agree that we all enforce all our ordinances.
Well, no, I agree. I'm just saying because we're talking about it.
Yeah.
Yeah. No, I told you, Drew.
So, this was another one that Mr. Sifin wanted, saw an immediate need for.
So, this one I would highly recommend that it stay put and be pushed. We may just have to readvertise again in the future.
Oh, so you don't want this one?
No, I think we should. Council?
I agree.
It's coming from legal that we should do.
No, I agree. What was you saying, though?
If, if we revisit this, this specific ordinance in the future, we may have more restrictions than we want to impose.
Gotcha.
Which would cause this process again in the future.
Got that.
But this is, this is a step in the right direction.
And I think this with any of our ordinances, I think, as we learn and grow, we'll have a little bit more knowledge and find two knowledge.
All right.
So, the next one is something that we talked about in our previous rezoning articles that we have. If you recall that parcel at the corner of Philadelphia and 515 on the northeast side, it was requesting to be rezoned to C2. And as you're aware, there's some, there are some C2 uses that may not be appropriate for a commercial district such as warehousing, auto shops, machinery, recycling, heavy equipment, storage, gas stations with auto service. So, we already, we already have gas stations, and we're getting three more. One more on 515. So, you know, some, if, you know, take a second or take some time. Also, there is something that was put in here. So, we put dwelling units as well. So, single-family, multifamily, we talked about how we did not want to have any more residential development along the 515 corridors. A, it's not safe. B, it's loud. And then another thing that you may want to think of, you know, should we put an amount of land? So, is it the first 300 feet of your property of your zone commercial, you cannot have these, you know? I don't want to see people coming up and trying to create nuisance strips, being like, oh, I'm not adjacent to the highway. Ever. So, and a lot of those parcels do have a 30-foot easement for watering. So, just to think about this, I'm pretty sure we were going to just think about this and anything else that you guys thought would be, you know, you'd want to see or not see. So, basically, we're talking about retail sales. We're talking about, you know, we have great opportunity with some future development. You have some other things that, you know, it's a, a big warehouse, U-Haul, another U-Haul comes up and says, I want to buy another 12 acres on C2, we're going to have another U-Haul there. So, this is just some things, you know, for when you're thinking about planning for the future and sticking with the future land map and the comp plan.
Yes, sir.
So, there's some issues with this one. Obviously, I think you have to have some sort of parameter about how far from the road you want to conclude this. And the concerns that I have is that you're not allowing dwellings, and a lot of that property is zoned for residential, either RA or other stuff. So, it sounds like you're taking away somebody's constitutional ideas or property the way they are legally imposed to do so, so.
For existing unperformed.
Right.
So, they would still be able to build the way if it is, so, right now, you're right, RA is, a lot of that land is RA.
Right.
So, if they want to develop it as RA, they would be able to develop it as RA.
So, what would this, what pieces of property would this, this be on rezoning zoning?
So, this would be the existing C2 zoned properties or rezoned properties. So, basically, you'll look at the, if you look at the use table, it'll have an asterisk that says except along the 515 corridor within X amount of feet.
So, as long as it allows for the mixed use and, and those properties that are zoned residential to, to do what they need to do, I mean, I can understand the issues around being adjacent to the highway. But at the same time, if, if that's allowable now, I, I would want to restrict it. Because that's, that's what I think I'm thinking.
Right. And so, right now, if they were to do RA, the problem is they're not doing RA.
Right.
So.
Well, so what does RA mean? Don't answer. Because I know the answer is you, we don't really, you know, we don't really have, can you have chickens or horses or cats? And the other issue, the other issue I have with this particular one is automobile and truck sales. And my, my question is there, if we're not going to allow them on the corridor, where, where are they going to go? And so, obviously, that has been, that has been, that's where they went as soon as they built the highway for the most part. And so, I don't, I mean, I'm, I'm okay with whatever council thinks, but I wouldn't mind more automobile places out there, particularly if we annex them, or they were annexed into the city. But that's just the other, every, everything else, I think, is, you know, okay.
Is there a way, Ms. Burgess, to use automobile and truck sales and delineate? And I don't want to say new versus used. I want to say a level of service. So, it's not just a sales center, it's a sales center with full service, such as the name brands that we have. If we had a four dealership, they clearly have the retail with the full service. Is that a distinction we could make through that also?
So, we could change the definition. We could also make it a special use permit so we're not having bots used, you know, what are those called?
Buy here, pay here?
Yeah, buy here, pay here's, and, you know, here, you know, I sell used cars and I'll pick apart two, so. I learned so much language here.
We're talking about those places.
No, I love to pick apart.
We just don't want it parked there.
Is John Deere in the city? I'm not even sure.
Uh, no. The one, uh, no, that's, yeah, the tractor guy, Nelson tractor.
John Deere.
Agro 515. Yes, by the racetrack?
Oh, yes.
Yes, they are in the city.
And I know that Jasper Bajeeb is not. How about Sean Kerr?
Yes.
Okay. And old Lawson was not, but, but new Day is. Okay. So, a lot of them is, well, some of them have stayed in the county. That's just finally, I don't have an idea about what's going on, how it may be different than it was.
No, I get a lot of calls. I have got a lot of calls about many warehouses.
Yeah.
And, you know, from what we could have, you know, for other high-end retail purposes, I know many warehouses aren't needed, just on the board there.
They don't necessarily require services, so it's a good place to put those.
And lastly, it is, and so, we will at some point, I would like to go back and revisit our lighting plan, our outdoor lighting for residential and commercial, try and get some guidelines in there on what we'd like to see. I happened in contact with George Power and Amica Lola, and they both gave me the specs of what they use. So, Councilman Fouse said that George Power no longer uses wood poles, and Amica.
Wood line.
Well, wood lighting poles, I apologize. And Amica Lola said they will put the top on anything. So, that being said, one of our recently finished residential subdivisions is going to have wood poles with the lights on top. So, from an aesthetic point of view, and Dr. Proctor was nice enough to point out to me, well, it's a telephone pole. Because I was like, I can't picture that in my head, and he's like, it's a phone pole. I'm like, oh, God.
I don't think that would be, I think, he does think.
So, and then I started picturing that in this, you know, these houses are like $400,000 houses, and we're going to put a telephone pole with a little Cobra on top, so. And also, I think because at some point we pay for said lights, we should also dictate what they're going to look like. So, I'd like to go dive deeper into this, but for now, while we're wrapping up some of these older subdivisions, if we get this in, that it can't have wood, and then we can move forward with our other design guidelines.
Thank you, ma'am.
I've got a good light pole stored, but I'm sure in private.
Council, based on what we've heard this evening, multiple items that we push forward to the agenda for Monday. I will note Chapter 95, Article 2, that is a representative or exceptional standard. I want to remove that one item and send that back to committee for study on its own. Everything else, I believe, can advance to a regular council meeting. Is this a consent agenda item, or is there any need to put it on the regular agenda?
Is this, the, the part that we're passing on, is it recommended by the committee?
The one that you're, the rest of it? Committee recommended all this?
Committee saw this last night.
So, well, this is.
I need to put on a consent order without having a recommendation of committee.
Yeah. I'm not going to.
Okay.
Nothing on consent.
That's good.
So, I would be willing to pull out the things that I've mentioned and, and go to consent, which is the sign thing that I think needs more. And the only other thing that I think needs consideration is automobile, I would say tractor too. I don't, I don't think that one will be in there until we decide that it does. The dwelling, as long as those citizens are protected, as far as the ability to use their property the way they're entitled to, apply either rezoning or current zoning, I'm okay with that.
And, and I'm okay with it, add on to what Doc said, et cetera. My issue is I think there's other things too. I think as long as they make it a clean, presentable place of sales, it's not some kind of eyesore. I think you should be able, if you want to sell boats, if you want to sell motorcycles, I, I think it should be, let free enterprise be free enterprise.
I, I disagree with that, though.
If we pull those two out, will that give you the, for the recommendations that you needed, if we push forward with the other ones?
Yes, I have not, the, the, the legal is due on Monday, so I will be able to just put those out and put those to the side. We can talk more about it. We can talk about this one, and putting those as a special use permit if you're along 515, we can talk, you know.
And I like that.
Yeah, and, and so that would.
So, that would cover John's concern, special use. So, if Boston Whaler came up here, wanted to put a boat line over there, I would say, I sure would like a Boston Whaler.
I would too. I have one growing up. They're a lot cheaper than ours, you know.
So, can, can we do that? Would we be able to do that, past this?
Yep. So, if we put a special use permit along 515 for automobiles and trucks up until bottled gas, how about that? Service, repair, automobile repair, and storage shop, do you want a storage shop? And then boat sales, service, and repair, and boat storage, or you just want to end at boat sales and service and repair?
Well, I'd like to see it like in a boat, motorcycle, four wheels, like I said, long distance.
Oh, yeah, OLM, yeah.
Yeah.
And that's what you're talking about, pulling out the second one, correct? Was the boats and.
Sending it to committee.
Yeah, sending it to committee.
That was just an example, yes.
Yeah. I mean, but that's why I was asking her, if we pulled that one and then the other one out for the signs, she could move forward with what was in there.
The entire, pull out the entire.
Yeah, pull out the entire thing.
Is there anything urgent on that? Did she know, of course, they could show up tomorrow.
They could.
Yeah.
Are they going to have to pay their parking lot?
Of course they do.
Sure.
Council, we're in. Input? Are you comfortable with us pulling those two here?
Yeah, 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 I'm comfortable with sending that back down.
You know, and the, the other thing that I thought about when, when developing this is if you can't get along 515 and you have to come into Jasper, and you see all the other things we do in our downtown and on the way to downtown and going over to Walmart and other places, so.
Sure. Well, we don't want the bup sounds downtown.
Oh.
Right.
Um, so. Council, we will advance to regular couns, uh, council meeting on Monday. We will remove 95 for temporary signs. We will remove Division 5.2 on clarification for use along 515 corridor. And Ms. Burgess, be prepared on Monday to accept that? Council, next item on the agenda, discussion of consideration of take-home vehicle policy. I will be presenting this on behalf of Ms. Holm. Council, this is a very simple piece. There's been a change to our take-home policy, and it includes a signature line. At the bottom of the policy, you'll see, I believe, in your packet, at the bottom, there's an acknowledgement now where our employees are actually acknowledging the policy. There's, policy's been reviewed by committee. Nothing has changed with the policy, it's just a simple acknowledgement.
Mr. Mayor, for your consideration, may I revisit the last subject? Does that have to go through P and Z and all that, or is that?
We do.
Okay, all right.
We do send it to P and Z for recommendation.
Thanks. All right, go ahead.
Your case? So, this is a simple addition to the policy, no change other than that. I'd like to advance this to the regular council meeting. Can this be a consent agenda item?
I'm not sure. It did go through committee, but wasn't full committee. And I need to, are you comfortable with moving it on?
Yeah, nothing's changed on the policy. All it is, is a signature, so.
Exactly. But I just want to make sure you're comfortable with it. Okay. I agree.
Awesome. Is there any additional information needed? I don't believe so. All right, next item, discussion of consideration to pay scale adjustment. At this time, Chief Sher, if you will come forward, please, sir.
Mayor, Council? This is an item that has been called for public safety and administrative committees twice, I think, at this point. But earlier on, you made an adjustment to the pay scale for the salary captain's position, and we're asking that you would adjust the fire marshal, which is also a rank of captain, to match that. Currently, that position tops out at 65, the pay range is from 52 to 65 K currently for fire marshal. We're asking that you adjust that from two 65 to 75. 65 being the story and 75 being the max.
Thanks, sir. This is a budgeted item, Ms. Williams? All right, Council, being in budget, it's been through both committees, it was recommended by both committees to advance, I'm going to raise this to regular council. Can this be a consent agenda, or is there a reason to discuss it? All right, consent, it will be. Is there any addition? Yes, sir?
No, I was just saying, let's put it on consent.
Any additional information needed? Fantastic. All right, next item, item number five, discussion of consideration of concrete replacement project. Chief Sher?
Again, this is a 2024 approved CIP project. The reason we are bringing it for you now is we have a lot of weather considerations when it comes to executing this project. Project will consist of breaking up and removing the concrete of the apron in front of the fire station in front of where our heavy apparatus roll out of the station. So, it's only half of that apron. That side has deteriorated over the years due to what we believe is some foundational issues underneath it. So, we need to pull that out and replace it before it continues to worsen. This has also been noted, I believe, on LGRMS for their inspections the last three years running. This needs to be addressed. We believe it's a, not only a trip and fall hazard for our personnel and citizens, but also there's a likelihood that a piece of concrete is tipped up from one of the apparatus come out and causes a lot of catastrophic damage to the area of the apparatus. We're going out to try and get quotes. We believe this project is going to come in around, like, the best quote we have at this time is $42,600. We've budgeted $50,000 for the project. We have had two other people come out and get the quotes as well, but they have not given us formal written quotes yet. We've been attempting to get written quotes for two weeks. It would be so difficult to get them, but unfortunately, it has been. We went before until we had two additional quotes to have three. Compared if it is under the $50,000 threshold, do I bid? And we tried to explore every option as far as taking care of this problem, but the only way we can really address it is to replace the concrete. The reason is time sensitive, it's weather related. We do not want to try and complete this project. We have freezing temperatures. At the same time, we don't want to do it in the summer because our apparatus will have to be out of the station, parked out, out front, out of the building. So, during the wintertime, obviously, the pumpers have some little freezing temperatures that can freeze the bust. During the heat of the summer, July, August, we've got a lot of electronics in those vehicles, and they can be affected by extreme heat buildup during the daytime. So, we're wanting to execute this and get it completed in the month of May.
Thank you, sir. Has this been to committee, sir?
Yes, this did go to the last public safety committee.
All right, this has gone to committee, counsel. As you're aware, large CIP projects, we have requested that they come back to full council. And this will come in under fifty thousand dollars for the project, so we're following our purchasing policy on it. Could I advance this to regular council? Is this a consent agenda item? Any additional information needed?
In my mind, we've already approved it on the budget, so why make it consent?
And just for my knowledge, chief, is it, um, in the picture, you have the four big bays? Is it including those, is that the half of that?
It's going to be where the four bays are. The first bay, it's not really affected, the rescue truck is there, there's not much damage. But there's a center line in that concrete that comes straight out. Everything towards the bayside with all the heavy apparatus, that would be done, replaced all the way to the harbor.
So, we're two of this, fires and two.
Well, it would be one, two, live truck, and then three. So, those last four bays, all of those would be.
Oh.
Anything further, counsel? Thank you, sir. Item number six, discussion of consideration of FEMA SAFER grant, Chief Sheriff.
Uh, the application period is open for the SAFER grant. SAFER grant is staffing for active fire emergency response. Um, this is a FEMA grant, much like the AFG we just applied for. Big contrast here is this grant is solely geared towards staffing and recruitment and retention. JFD, we're going after, what we would like to go after, staffing. I also have the numbers to go with that. But the target of this grant is to get fire departments to comply NFBA seventeen-ten. Seventeen-ten is a national standard, and it, seventeen-ten requires sixteen, well, recommend it, I should say, sixteen to seventeen firefighters on the same, single-family, same-store structure. Um, and it's, so the purpose of this grant is to help you get to that point with your staffing levels. What we would like to do is, we would like to ask for six personnel through this grant. It is not a matching funds grant, it is a cost-sharing grant. We initially planned for this budget cycle to ask for three personnel and then hopefully follow that up next with three additional personnel. So, by asking for six, what we would be able to do is go ahead and reap the immediate benefit from having the staffing with not having to share, to have the full burden of the cost. Just to go over some of the numbers really quickly. One full-time employee, and everything else, if I say full-time employee, I'm referencing a, a fully certified firefighter who's also a advanced EMT. That is our minimum that we hire at, you have to have that to be hired to test the fire department. It costs the city eighty-five thousand, five hundred and eleven dollars, that includes benefits. So, that's a pay rate of eighteen dollars an hour, because that's our entry level at that, that particular licensure level. And actual compensation part is fifty-five thousand, seven hundred and sixty-four dollars. There's an additional benefits, uh, costs to the city of twenty-nine thousand, four hundred and forty-seven dollars. Now, this grant, well, this grant project, they cover the actual compensation component, but they do not cover benefits, and that's why I break that out. The first year, because it's a three-year period, in the first year, the grant would cover seventy-five percent of that compensation. The second year, be an additional seventy-five thousand. And the third year, they cover, excuse me, not seventy-five thousand, second year seventy-five percent. Third year is thirty-five percent. So, to break it down overall, I can get a little deeper into the numbers if you would like. Total cost per year would be, year one, if we went with three, because we can do three or six, we can go, we can put a secondary option. Uh, three would cost the city a hundred and thirty thousand, one hundred and sixty-six dollars, compared to the six at two hundred and sixty thousand. Uh, it's the same thing for year two. Year three, three personnel would cost us a hundred and ninety-seven thousand dollars, and the six would cost us three hundred and ninety-four thousand dollars. Uh, the total savings, if we were to give word to this grant for three personnel, total savings to the taxpayer would be three hundred and nine thousand dollars. If we went to the six, it would be six hundred and eighteen thousand, nine hundred and eighty dollars.
Will you give us two again? The savings?
The savings, if we went with three personnel, it'd be three hundred and nine thousand, four hundred and ninety dollars. Uh, if we went with six, we would be saving six hundred and eighteen thousand, nine hundred and eighty dollars and eighty cents.
Thank you. Has this been to committee, chief?
It has been to committee to present, yes.
Fantastic. Counsel, the information is before we advance this to the regular council meeting. Is this a consent agenda item? Is there a reason not to place it on consent?
The only thing I can think of is just letting the people know that we're looking for other ways to kind of fund these positions and the growth that we're anticipating. And I think it looks like a win from staff, you know, chief come up and say, hey, you know, I, I look for ways to save us money, and this is one of the ways through a grant we were able to apply, so that's the only reason I would like to bring it up.
Well, I'll say, this is a public meeting and that camera is rolling. We are telling the public, that, that's the whole part of the consent agenda. So, regular agenda?
I don't think it would hurt to do that. It'd be good.
This should also not impact us budget terribly this year due to the fact it's, if we're awarded the grant, it's a hundred and eighty-day retiring process, and then the grant is implemented once we hire. So, a hundred and eighty days is six months. I highly doubt they would be able to turn around and take applications. Application period ends April twelfth, and turn around and award that prior to July one.
And counsel, is there any additional information you would like to request before our meeting? All right. Thank you, sir. Moving on to item number seven, discussion of consideration to purchase utility task vehicle, UTV, Public Works Department, and Mr. Josh Davis listed on this one. Mr. Davis?
I'm here, counsel. It was approved last year for this UTV to be purchased. And look, after looking at it and looking at reviews, felt like the machine was too small and I'd like to upgrade the size a bit. It came in at eight thousand. I got a quote the other day for about a hundred and seventeen thousand.
That is in the packet, counsel, sixteen-nine, sixty-two, sixty-nine. Measure where Mr. Davis has taken over the department he is in recently. He looked at last year's request that was approved for this year's budget. As he mentioned, eight thousand was approved. When the specs of that vehicle were actually looked at, it would not be adequate for the needs of our department or the events that we're hosting. And he was advised by the administration for him to go back and find another quote with something that would suffice our city. And so, you'll see the attached quote from Nelson Tractor, sixteen-nine, sixty-two, sixty-nine. Mr. Davis, this has not been to committee, has it?
It has.
It has? Fantastic. Advance this to the regular council, it's been to committee. Is this a consent agenda item, counsel? Is there any reason not to put it on consent?
Were you coming up with the rescue money?
Ms. Williams?
So, there was eight thousand budgeted for the original, um, UTV, and then we were reviewing the budget and under small equipment for parks, we had additional money in there for, um, the camera project, the bigger camera project we're in indeed, but I think we're downsizing that a little bit because we found different avenues. So, they could use a portion of that. And then also, if we had any upcoming auction sales, we can use proceeds from that to go towards it.
Also, there was two other items that was budgeted also, and that's right now, I'm not, I'm not purchasing. One was a sweeper. It was approved for, it's a four sweeper, and I don't think that will take care of what we need.
We need a street sweeper.
We need a street sweeper, not so much a four sweeper. The other one is a plotter for signs. After investigating them, there's federal regulations to, to them as well that I, there's just, I don't, I don't know about, so. And I, I don't feel like that plotter is going to be in an environment to last longer than six, seven, eight months.
What's a plotter?
The print out.
Pissed up the bottom letter.
Sorry?
Pissed up the bottom letter from the signs.
Oh, okay.
And we looked at that a few years ago, and it was cheaper.
Those vinyl signs, I wonder. It's about vinyl signs.
Vinyl goes on to the metal, I think.
Yeah.
Did you listen to that?
It was cheaper to bottom, yeah.
This was if the plotter allows to print the vinyl and the lettering, we would still have to buy the stamped and cut metal. And so, we're reevaluating that completely based on national standards that the signage should be. The machine and the plotter they originally been approved for did not meet those standards. Once we got to looking at it, we needed to cut that and move forward in that direction. So, we've been ordering.
So, is this the same project that we were working on?
It's part of it, part of it. Uh, the other is just our signage around town, stop signs, yield signs. Yes. But it, it ties into our road signs also. That was another state standard or national standard.
Josh, have you ordered any street signs since you've been?
I have.
Oh, okay. Counsel, yours does.
We found them. Supply, there was. County had a sign maker, and then. Anyway.
And Josh, this is the four seater versus the two seater?
This is a two seater.
Okay. How much more was the four seater?
Seven thousand more. And with the size of the bed, you lose all your bed space. So, picking up the trash probably would be not as easy.
So, what was originally good, or we're budgeting for, was it a Kubota as well?
No, it was for a Coleman UTV. Looking at it, I don't know where I would have that serviced. Where a Kubota, I could take it to.
Yeah, that's one of the.
Because we did talk about committee and using the parts and that kind of stuff as well.
And then having fire steering over manual.
If you don't get manual, that's me.
All right, counsel, is this, is there any reason not to place it on consent?
I agree.
And any additional information we may need? I believe we've asked a couple of questions. All right. Thank you, counsel. Item number eight, discussion of consideration to purchase a tractor with bush hogs, back wing attachments for Public Works Department, again, Mr. Davis.
This, uh, this tractor had also been approved. It had been approved at the sixty-six thousand, if I'm correct.
Sixty-five.
And it's came in, did under that price. And we do need it for all the streets and rightways that we do maintain.
Well, you also do notice, uh, this is. Uh, yes, this is all source well also from Kubota. And you'll see that it is listed down there below Nelson Tractor Company. My understanding, Mr. Davis, was this was on the lot, or could be equipped?
It could, and it's only one.
It is on the lot.
Every, everything that has been brought up is on site.
Fantastic. Counsel, the last tractor or apparatus of this nature we bought was for the water plant. That was a different facility, that was discussed in committee. This is needed pretty quickly for the season that we're approaching. This replaces some tractors that are quite outdated.
Quite outdated and having mechanical issues.
Mechanical failures.
Yes.
All right, advance to the regular council meeting, it's been through committee. Is there any reason not to place this on consent?
Do you have a, a program for, I know you've got a lot of new employees in your department as far as some kind of training with this equipment? As far as all of, all of your equipment? Just out of your.
And the mower attachment, is that rear?
It is.
Oh, yeah.
It is, and it folds up, so it can be, you can drive up the road and fold it up and.
Okay.
Is, is that a pro and state contract? John Deere?
I'm not sure.
I believe, maybe they are on parts source well. Uh, John Deere is, I don't know about that.
Well, Josh, could you, uh, speak to the dealership they're getting this from and see if they can do a shake down and destruction and safety?
Yes.
So, I did take care of that, counsel, for training on the equipment. We'll see if we can line up with the vendor and then any other vendors we use. Any other information needed? I've marked for consent agenda, yes, unless like your opposition.
One other thing on the, um, budget is the back wing, right? And that's a mower attachment that can come up and cut, is that my understanding?
Yeah, I think the back wing is the part of this purchase.
It's just the one that you pull behind the tractor.
Oh, so it's.
The other one is, the side arm is not on this.
Oh, okay. We, we don't need that side one, though, do we?
Possibly, but that's something, that's something else I'm looking into because I did get a price on that.
Yeah.
It's extra long.
Yeah.
Maybe that'll be on the nutter.
All right, I just didn't know if this tractor had that capability to include that or if that's a special tractor.
I am trying to figure out another way to use another piece of equipment plus this one.
Yeah, to get us to this year, that moment. Call it God with a meaty ear.
All right, thank you, Mr. Davis. Counsel, moving on to item number nine, discussion of consideration for an annual maintenance plan contract with American Tank Company. Uh, I'll present on behalf of Ms. Goldner, uh, through the press committee, met with American Tank Company about a maintenance plan for our elevated water tanks. We're all familiar with those tanks. Some maintenance has been performed while we've been serving on the council. Some have not been maintenance up to our standard, which we want. This contract has gone through legal. It's a multi-year agreement with the ability to cancel at any time, and there is no penalty to cancel. This will simply get us on track to where our water tanks can be maintenance. The agreement is listed, Mr. Sinefin does have the evening off. I assume there will be questions on this. I would just say I would not place this on consent. If you have any questions tonight, then it probably needs to be drawn regular agenda and asked of Mr. Seidler.
Is that been through committee?
Yes, it has been through committee.
And committee members? It's set to the full council by the committee.
If you don't have questions, it can certainly be placed on consent agenda.
I would like to, we'll talk a significant amount about it. I think some needs to be discussed.
And I just had a question, too. I don't know if y'all can maybe look in the right direction. I mean, I noticed that there's just different amounts for all the different towers that we do have, so like, it's just strange to me that there's, you know, eight thousand dollar difference between the Walmart and Liberty Lane one when they're both the same size, and it seems like they're getting the same treatment.
That may be based off elevation. I know they, they may hold the same, but they have different elevations to how big they are. That may be, but that could be a Charles and Josh question. Yeah.
Liberty, Liberty is.
The tallest.
The tallest. So, that is probably.
Does that have anything to do with the condition they're currently in, do you know, Josh?
I do not know.
Is that where it all played, inspecting all of them at that point? Well, I'm not sure, that's a good question.
Could be age for the times.
All right.
So, we're going to get those, how are we going to get those addressed? Those questions, those questions.
Additional information needed?
Okay.
And then I'll start working on that. And, and so, counsel, thank you for grace of patience because this is a good process where you're able to ask those questions in a public setting together as a group. I can take note of them, and then staff and I can start processing those questions to push information back out before you send on Monday.
Yeah.
That's a good question.
Item number ten, discussion and consideration of Jasper City Hall ADA Parking Task Order, number eight. Ms. Burgess, thank you for hanging around, I'm sorry we couldn't place these together. Uh, counsel, this centers around the ADA compliance of our facility. We sit in and bring it up to code compliance by the time repayment begins. Ms. Burgess?
So, earlier in the year, or actually like a month ago, so I got this earlier in the year. I'm sort of updating this. Josh and I were upfront doing some of our calculations, and one of the things that I've been working with Ms. Goldman on is getting us ADA compliant with the building that we have so that we can fill our obligations for our project. So, that being said, I reached out to Kimlyn Horn, said this was, we need this ASAP. Reason why we're having it engineered is because of the pitch that is required for ADA compliance. So, the thought being is to, the front is going to be a one-way only. We're going to have two spaces to the left of the flagpoles. And because there is a four-point-six percent grade difference over there, so, so it has to be built up. So, we need somebody to design that to us so that A, it's stable, and then B, it meets that percentage of stuff, that's why we got it. So, the task order came back with basically everything we need, and it was eighty-five hundred dollars. So, I'm looking to you to approve this task order so we can start moving forward with the design.
And this is a requirement of our, uh, funding agency for the similar, uh, treatment lane.
Yes.
Didn't we already approve this?
We got this yesterday, so that's why we put on this.
Bathroom, some of this stuff for.
It's sort of a handicap.
Okay. Ms. Burgess, it is Thursday, do you, are, are we required to vote tonight, or do you believe Monday would be okay?
No, Monday would be fine. Just want to get it on your radar. We do have another, um, project coming up that'll be on your next rotation for the Frontier Road, um, project, but they also got that in for us as well. I just didn't get it onto this agenda.
Thank you, ma'am.
All right.
Where, and where is that money coming from, do you know?
I do not.
Is that eighty thousand of her dollars? Ms. Williams? Ms. Williams?
It's probably, probably just happy as, as balanced, yeah, different. It's using credit card.
I'm going to advance that to the regular council meeting.
I was wondering if that's coming out of your department?
Yeah, it looks pretty good.
I know, why not?
So that will be advanced to the regular council meeting.